I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. First, a motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711, the PWCS Board enters closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and consider the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and resignation of specific employees, appointees, or officers of the Prince William County School Board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 82, to consult with Division Council and receive legal advice regarding actual and probable litigation where such consultation and briefing in open session will adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A and 7. Three, to consult with legal counsel and staff regarding the investment of public funds in the acquisition of property for school purposes where discussion is open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the board and the financial interests of the school division under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A3, 5, 7, and 8. And four, to receive information and discuss actions to discipline a specific student under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A2, the performance of specific personnel under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1, and information relating to the security of Hilton High School where discussion in open session would jeopardize the safety of students or staff and security of the building under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A19 and 2.2-3705.22 and 14.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is six yes, two absent, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately one hour. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. We're going to move... Are we good on this now, Ms. Urban? Excellent. We're going to... Everyone, please go to... You did your F5, join the meeting. We're going to go to the adoption of the closed session consent agenda. Motion is in order. 8.01. We don't have any action items.
Yeah, that's right there.
What?
Eight.
Oh. Oh, got it. I'm sorry. So we'll do the motions order for the action item. Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board authorize legal counsel and staff to initiate a quick-take condemnation proceedings for acquisition of 105 acres of Delaney property, specifically Parcels 1 and 7 south of the county parkway for the proposed 14th high school, including providing the required 30 to 45 days' notice to the owners of the school board's intent to file a certificate of take.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session certification. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Or consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go. Sorry, consent.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Second.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session certification, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of the school board meeting on May 1st, 2019 be certified by adopting the following resolution now therefore be resolved that the school board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed session meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by this board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Wonderful. This is the time in our meeting where we do Positively PWCS, where we talk about some of the great things that we are doing here in Prince William County schools with the students, our staff, and our faculty. Tonight's Positively PWCS presentation spotlights the nationally recognized automotive program at Hilton High School. Willie Deutsch, the Coles District, will introduce our presentation. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am excited about the many career and technical education programs we offer to our students. These programs are extremely important in preparing our students for careers after graduation. One of these outstanding programs, Automotive Technology, is housed at Hilton High School in our district. The Automotive Technology Program was selected by the Specialty Equipment Manufacturing Association as one of only five programs in the county to participate... Or, sorry, in the country, to participate in a special Jeep build. Ed Stevens, auto mechanics teacher, is here this evening to share more about this exciting program. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you. Chairman Dr. Latif, committee members, Dr. Walts, thank you guys for having us. We're going to have a short video in a second, but as he was saying, we were... This, what you're about to see is only the tip of the iceberg of what we do. We are one of the finest automotive programs in the country, and I know this because we travel the country. And a lot of it has to do with great people behind us, not just my students, but Mr. Cassidy, the principal, Sal Colangelo, my administrator, Mickey Mulgrew. All these are all important people, even... And, sorry, left out Doug Wright. All important people that help us do what we do for these students that are behind me here. So if we would, if we can play the video of what's happening so far. We also got a visit from SEMA to come in and check on the progress and to speak with some of the students. I also understand that our school superintendent, Dr. Walts, has been watching our show. We hope you continue to enjoy it.
What did you guys think when you guys got selected?
It was amazing. I love it.
How's it going so far?
It's good, smooth.
Smooth? Excellent. No kinks yet?
Hopefully it stays that way.
And so far, the Litch has been your favorite?
Yeah.
What else have you guys done to her? I haven't seen her. I don't know yet. I haven't watched videos yet. I wanted to be surprised.
Honestly?
Oh, you painted the frame? Wait, did you... Are you the school that painted her? Oh, look at that! Oh my goodness! And you guys painted her too? That's incredible. It looks amazing. Well, it looks incredible. You guys did phenomenal job. Has this been your guys' favorite part so far of the build? Yeah?
Yeah.
You find that fascinating, putting all the elements together and back together?
Yes.
Awesome.
So that's where we've left off so far. A beautiful rolling chassis and a body that's just about ready for paint. We hope you'll consider keeping up with our build on our YouTube show, Bulldog Builds. Thank all of you very much, and I want to... One thing I just want to add about this is that the majority of the work that you saw in that video was done on weekends, after school, and even during spring break. These guys came in, no extra credit, just for the love of the build and the camaraderie and just being a part of it. And there's a lot more yet to continue. So we do hope that you do follow along with us on the journey to finish this thing, which our deadline is May 23rd, which is our end of year banquet, which all of you are invited to. So thank you again for inviting us out, and I hope you enjoyed it.
Ms. Jessie.
Okay, I hope I'm correct about this. Are you the group that put that motor together and took it apart at... Yes.
That's a separate... We have an engine building team. Raise your hand if you're on that team.
Oh, my goodness. It was so...
Where did you see it?
It was one of those student leadership...
Oh, one of the events? You actually saw it live?
Yeah.
Okay. He's the current captain of the new first team, and they've already qualified for Nationals. We go out to Vegas every year and compete, and we've won the event before.
How many minutes you took?
We do it under 20.
Oh, my God. They took the entire motor apart and put...
That's what you saw in the picture. Yeah, he's seen it a couple times.
Oh, I am just blown away.
It was his car.
I'm sorry? Well, I heard he's got a new car now.
I just want you guys to know, and ladies also, that you have a gift, and it's... I have been in this business for a long time, and I'm an elementary person, so I'm learning high school. And I... In fact, I just wrote something about career. These kids who have an opportunity to develop a career, or kids who... At Potomac, Betty Covington invited me there to see the welding program, and there were students who had left and came back because they're hands-on kids. They're hands-on learners, and so you are providing a career for these kids, and I thank you very, very much. I'm just totally blown away by what you guys do.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Latif.
Ms. Williams.
I also wanted to share, I've seen the engine rebuild not quite as fast. You had a display at Makerspace Fair a couple years ago, and I was equally impressed as someone who can only get in a car and drive it, and I'm total loss when something lights up or goes wrong. It's absolutely fascinating to me, and I think that it's an invaluable skill. There are people like me who desperately need you for the rest of our lives. And I just want to say too, watching all of you while you're watching the video, that the joy on your face is exceptional to see, and it just really brightens my heart, and I'm very thankful for teachers like you and for students like you who participate in these programs. And I hope that you come back after you graduate and start your career and continue to talk to other students who are following your footsteps, because it's very important. You should be very proud of yourselves. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank... Dr. Walts.
Just have to throw in one more. Congratulations. I've had the pleasure of being out there and seeing them at work in class. It's amazing. I've seen them perform the engine tear-down and build-back-up, and again, I just want to promote their video show that comes out. It's called Bulldog Builds, and it's on YouTube, and it is always different. They change it up every time. Music is a different pace, and... But it's amazing what they have learned and what they can do, so congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to congratulate everybody again. It's exciting to have you guys here. Keep up the great work and keep pursuing this awesome skill, and thank you to everybody at Hilton for really the great career and technical education opportunities that we have there. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You know, I operate on the eyeball. The eyeball ain't a whole lot different, except from a kid to an adult to someone elderly. But what you guys do with different engines, different cars, and everything you have to learn, I have... I've always just been astounded by the ability for you all to learn what you need to do to do it successfully. So congratulations, best wishes, and thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, sir.
So I would like to call this meeting. Mr. Deutsch. Mr. Deutsch, go ahead.
One second. Is Dave Cassidy still in the room? Sorry. Did they just jump ship?
There he is.
There he is. I just want to take a moment briefly and just thank the Hilton administration, thank the Hilton Counseling Team for everything that they did yesterday, for their response, and for the way that you all went above and beyond. So thank you all so much for everything.
Thank you. It was a team effort, Mr. Deutsch, from risk management to superintendent's office. I'm very proud of how my team ran it, so thank you.
So I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. There will be a moment of silence at the request of Justin Wilk, Potomac District. Thank you. Next will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If we have a student in the audience who would like to come up to, please come on up to the microphone, introduce yourself, tell us what school you are from. Tell us what school you're from, and then the flag is this way.
All right. My name is Deja Robinson. I am Student Council Association President of CD Hilton High School. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second? Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, motions in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a note that it was pointed out to me by a member of the public that item number 1505, Contract Award for Traffic Signal at John D. Jenkins Elementary School, had the street named wrong, and that has been corrected. In our minutes, it is not Kentwood Lane, but it is Kenwood Drive at the parkway where the light will be installed. And this is... Actually, there's a light that's already there. We're going to be making modifications to the intersection with the school, so it's a site where there's already a light, and it is Kenwood Drive. So thank you very much, everyone, for making that correction.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Any other discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
During this time on the agenda, the student representative, Saad Faraj, will speak and have an opportunity to introduce himself and share the interests of our student rep. He is the representative from Patriot High School. Saad, please take it away, sir.
All right. Hey, everyone. Hope everyone's having a great day so far. Today's actually a really big day, May 1st. That means for those students who decided to take the college route, today's decision day. So for any of those students, good luck in your decision. Have a lot of fun, but also try hard at college. Good luck. I recently had the pleasure of speaking with the SCA officers from Battlefield High School. Unfortunately, because of scheduling conflicts with testing, we ended up talking a lot over email, online communication. I specifically inquired about their concerns that they wanted to be addressed for the boundary proposals, and really what they brought back to me was just to take into consideration splitting up of neighborhoods for the planning committee. If you guys are watching, they suggested instead of splitting a neighborhood into two, either take the neighborhood as a whole or don't take the neighborhood at all. And that's what they said on that. I was also invited by the students from Stonewall Jackson to attend the first planning meeting for the new boundaries at their school. For those that weren't there, I'll just quickly summarize what the students said. The SJ students are proud of diversity. I've mentioned that before, and they want each school to experience that. The students from SJ were generally concerned that in the first plan, which I'm sure is bound to change, that the diversity of students was not dispersed to the other schools but funneled into SJ. For instance, the percentage of economically disadvantaged students and English learners increased over time with the new boundaries at SJ but decreased at the other schools. They just want that to be taken into consideration. I personally would like to bring to the board's attention, as was done yesterday, that 200 SJ students within two days signed a petition opposing the first plan. As a student... As the representative of student voice, I urge that this be taken into consideration, given that I feel as though if that had happened for a longer duration in time, there would have been more signatures. Actually, now on this week's student representative version of Student Spotlight, I'd like to point to a few bright mathematicians. Prince William County Elementary Schools just had their Challenge 24 competition. For those that don't know, students are given a card with four numbers, and they have to combine them using mathematical equations to get the number 25. In third grade, Emily from Williams won first place. In fourth grade, Hanya Sajad from River Oak got first place, and in grade five, Lucy Liu from Alview also won first place. One last thing. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and there's one teacher that I would like to recognize. Don't worry, I got his permission before I actually used his name. His name's Mr. Hampson. Ninth grade, I knew him as my debate coach. In 11th grade, I knew him as my AP US teacher, AP US history teacher. Now I know him as my AP research teacher. Throughout that time, and I know going forward within my life, I'll know him as my role model. And so, Mr. Hampson, if you're watching, which I'm sure you are, thanks for everything you do. You try really hard at your job, and it's apparent. Next, I plan on formally visiting Stonewall's SCA to get a more in-depth set of feedback on the boundaries. And actually, really big news, so the county high schools, at least a few of them, SJ, Patriot, Brentsville, FP, and Battlefield just had countywide fundraiser amongst each other, and they're able to... They're still counting the money, but raised roughly $200 so far for the Education Foundation in Puerto Rico. I thought that was pretty cool. And then going on next Saturday, there will be a One for All Ball, which is an additional prompt for the students within the Special Education Department. They've been... The SCA presidents have been working tirelessly with their special education departments to make sure that goes well, and I'm looking forward to it. And of course, all the board members are invited. Of course, Dr. Walts, you're invited. Every student loves you. And that's all I have. Until then, the students can always email me at my@princewilliamcountygivenemail. Spell it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Saad. These are one of your last few meetings. You didn't announce or tell us what you decided for May 1st. Yeah? Tell me. Where are you going to college, buddy?
Next year, for the fall semester, I will begin college at the College of William and Mary.
All right. Congratulations, my friend. We're very proud of you. Next, we're going to move on to citizens' comments. It looks like we do have a full house and a lot of folks to speak tonight. We will get through all of them in this first round. There's going to be close to 30. Everyone that signed up will have a chance to speak in advance and at the door. I will call the first 10 names up, and if you could just come to the front row and grab a seat, it'll be Lubna Azmi, Deborah Rupert, Pam Johnson, Shupin Carpenter, Janice Klein, Tina Fairbanks, Elizabeth Karamanis, Cynthia Mendel, Gina Bellamy, Teresa Polk. You will have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up, and you should stop. It is very uncomfortable for me to tell you all to stop, and so please, I'd rather not have to do that. It doesn't look nice on TV, and so if you can just work with me on that, that would make it all go smoothly. Please use proper decorum manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker, Lubna Azmi. Ms. Azmi, thank you.
Good evening. I have some papers that I'd just like to give to each and every one of you guys, if that's all right. And those have the demographics of the new proposed boundary plan for the new high school. My name is Lubna Azmi. My information is with the clerk. I am the senior class president of Stonewall Jackson High School, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of the community on the proposed boundary plan for the 13th high school. I can personally attest that I would not have become the person that I am today without the diversity that is such a characterizing trait of Stonewall Jackson. My goals, my aspirations, and my life have been influenced and changed by attending Stonewall. I gained a better understanding through the lens of this school, community, by not just learning about the world through a textbook, but witnessing and interacting with it outside of the classroom, and that is essential to the growth and maturity of every student. When I matriculated to Stonewall, I always felt accepted. I learned to not only embrace my identity, but to cherish it in this beautiful mixing pot of culture. I've met people from all over the world that have faced different challenges, that have lived different lives, and because of that, I've been able to not only learn more about others, but about myself as well. Without my school, I would not have been able to accomplish what I have, both through my leadership and through coming to accept myself. Because of the diversity, I discovered my passion for public service. Because of the diversity, I was no longer afraid to speak up. If it weren't for my school, community, and how it shaped me, I don't know if I would have even had the confidence to be speaking out here today. And the statistics of the proposed boundary plan have already been previously discussed by Saad. And regarding the plan itself and its consequences, I'd like to state some conclusions that Dean Stevenson has drawn up based off of the proposed plan. One, the current boundary plan amplifies the economic disparity between students at Stonewall Jackson and other Western Prince William County schools. The current boundary plan increases how far above the county percent average Stonewall is in regards to students who are limited English proficiency, economically disadvantaged, and of color, while simultaneously decreasing these percentages for Patriot and Battlefield. The proposed boundary plan will increase inequalities in extracurricular funding, specifically reducing funding at Stonewall Jackson. It will decrease the number of qualified teachers willing to remain or willing to apply to Stonewall, not because teachers don't love the students, but because teachers will be faced with additional hardships. We all know that they don't get paid enough already. And finally, the current boundary plan aids in the segregation of high schools in Prince William County. Mr. Stevenson also brings to attention an excerpt in Regulation 264-2 regarding what each plan must encompass, including number two in the outline, to consider the demographic balance of any proposed new school boundaries. This plan does not do that. As one of Stonewall's teachers said yesterday, "This plan looks like it was drawn in the 1950s. People are upset, and they have every right to be." I am a student that lives in the Bristow area, specifically in Independence. I love this school, and I love the people. We have students that have attended any university you can name. This year specifically, to name a few, Georgetown, Cornell, University of Pennsylvania, UVA, William and Mary, Virginia Tech, the Naval Academy, and I personally will be attending Johns Hopkins. For anyone that fears to send their children to Stonewall, trust me, and the numerous students and teachers that have fought for our community, especially for yesterday. We are strong, we are smart, we are kind, and we are prideful. I've spoke to many people, and a common response I received was, "You can't make everyone happy." But in this case, there's a difference between making everyone happy and doing what is right. We are asking that Prince William County give the future students the chance to grow in the same way that I and each and every one of my peers has grown.
Thank you.
This plan is a step backwards, and we ask that Prince William County instead move forward, because we need that more now, more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Rupert.
Good evening. Good evening, School Board Chairman Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Deborah Rupert, and my address is on file with the clerk. On behalf of the school nurses in the Potomac District, I would like to present Justin Wilk with this certificate of appreciation for your support of school health services. At this time, I would ask all of the nurses from the Potomac District to please stand. At this time, I would ask all of the nurses from the Potomac District to please stand. Mr. Wilk, thank you very much, not only now, but always and under all circumstances, for your selfless dedication to our students and their families.
Thank you. Pam Johnson.
Good evening, School Board Chairman Dr. Latif, School Board members, Dr. Walts. My name is Pam Johnson. I'm the school nurse at Colgan High School, and my address is on file with the clerk. On behalf of all the school nurses of the Coles District, I would like to present to Mr. Deutsch a certificate of appreciation for your support of student health services and all that you've done to help advance the well-being of the students in your district. If all the nurses who are in Coles District would please rise, we thank you.
And please forgive me. Shupin Carpenter.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Dr. Walts, and School Board members. My name is Shupin Carpenter. My address is on file with the clerk. I am a school nurse in the Prince William County schools for the last 13 years. My base school is Minneville Elementary School. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the nurses in the Neapsco District to express our deepest gratitude to you, Ms. Ralston, for your support of our school health program. Our program has grown significantly in the last 10 years, and we are fortunate that you have, we have your continued support and funding for additional nurses in each school and each school year. Most schools now have a full-time nurse, and we're able to provide the students of Prince William County students, the students of Prince William County, with the high-quality professional nursing care they deserve. The National Association of School Nurses positions supports a full-time nurse in every school to promote wellness and success in education for all students. It is evident that this school board and Dr. Walts understands the importance of health and wellness when it comes to student success in classroom. We thank you for advocating for the school nurses and always making an effort to expand the school health program. You've shown your support for school health program countless times and made us feel valued and respected within the school system. Ms. Ralston, we are honored to have your support in the Neapsco District. We thank you for your continued support of nurses and school health and student health. We thank you for your continuing to make decisions that benefit the well-being of students within the county, always making their safety, physical, mental, social, and emotional health a priority. The students of Prince William County are safer and healthier because of your support, the support you provide, and because of the ability there, because of that, they have the ability to focus on learning and growing as students. On behalf of the school nurses in the Neapsco District, I would like to present you, Ms. Diane Ralston, with this certificate of appreciation. Will all the school nurses from the Neapsco District stand up, please?
Janice Klein.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Latif, Mr. Walts, and the School Board members. I am Janice Klein. I'm the school nurse at Marsh Dower Middle School, and my address is on file with the clerk. On behalf of the school nurses in the Brentsville District, I would like to present Mr. Giltrunam with this certificate of appreciation for your support of our school nurse program. And would all the nurses of the Brentsville District please stand?
Tina Fairbanks.
Good evening, School Board Chairman Dr. Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Tina Fairbanks, and my address is on file with the clerk. On behalf of the school nurses in the Gainesville District, I would like to present Allison Satterwhite with this certificate of appreciation for your support of school health services. Would all the nurses in the Gainesville District please stand? I want to personally thank you as a former Battlefield High School parent and a Gainesville District resident. Your support and participation with student health and academics is priceless. Our sincerest thank you, Mrs. Satterwhite.
Good evening, School Board Chairman Dr. Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Katie Karamanis, and I am the school nurse at Freedom High School. My address is on file with the clerk. On behalf of all of the school nurses in the Woodbridge District, I would like to thank, and I'd like to present Lori Williams with this certificate of appreciation from School Health Services. Would all of the school nurses that are in the Woodbridge District please stand? And they may not all be here, but... Thank you, Ms. Williams, for supporting us, for your continued support, for all of your years of service. We truly appreciate it.
Cynthia Mendel.
Good evening, School Board Chairman Dr. Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Cynthia Mendel, and my address is on file with the clerk. I have been fortunate to be the school nurse at Lakridge Elementary for the last 16 years. On behalf of the school nurses in the Akaquan District, I'd like to present Mrs. Lily Jessie with the certificate of appreciation for her unbelievable support for the school health services. Mrs. Jessie has always been a very strong advocate for us, for all the school nurses. She has worked tirelessly for all of us. She was instrumental in the change that occurred, changing our status from classified to certified. And we can't even say how much we appreciate her dedication to all of us. Would all the nurses from the Akaquan District please stand?
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Gina Bellamy, and my address is on file. Tonight, I'm just so honored to be here to thank this entire body just for supporting our program. And I'd like to present Dr. Latif with a certificate of appreciation.
Well, that doesn't happen every school board meeting.
Good evening, School Board Chairman Dr. Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Teresa Polk, and my address is on file with the clerk. I am the supervisor for this awesome group of nurses, and we are here tonight, as you all know, to say thank you to each and every one of you for your unwavering support of the school health program and for moving us along. It is unbelievable. We have 100 nurses now. They could all, they could not all be here tonight, but they are here in spirit. But we are very excited about all of the things that have happened over the years. I will be going into my 18th year in July as the supervisor for this program, and it has grown tremendously. Some of you really don't even know the whole history, but we are very proud of our program, and we just thank you for, as many of the nurses have already said, for your support and your understanding that it takes, students must be well physically and mentally to be able to learn. So having all these nurses onboard is really making a significant difference. And again, we just say thank you. So I would like to present our dynamic superintendent, Dr. Stephen L. Walts, with his certificate of appreciation.
All right.
For his support. So I'd like all the nurses present to please stand. And since I have a couple more minutes, I will say we have the additional nurses coming onboard. It's a challenge for Gina and I to figure out all of the staffing, and it's a challenge right now when we don't have all of our nurses here. Sometimes, you know, people out sick, whatever. But I think we do a dynamic job, and we do a job, a good job of keeping all of these kids safe. We have outstanding people. I'm proud of my school nurses. And so, again, thank you for all you have done and all you continue to do to support the students and school health services.
I'll take just a quick second, chairman's privilege. On behalf of the entire school board, I think I can speak for all of us. We can't thank you all enough for what you do in keeping our students safe, secure, handling situations like what happened with yesterday, crisis management. We put a lot on you. We expect a lot of you, and you over-deliver. And I can't thank you enough. Teresa, you've been stealing nurses from Centerra and hospitals and places I work at and taking some fabulous folks, and that, for that, I'm not that happy about. But, but I'm very happy they're in our school system. Thank you all very much for coming this evening. Thank you. The next, I will announce the next 10 speakers will be Warren Worth, sorry, Warren Worth, Sarita Geider, Anthony Bertrand, Gianna Girak, Emily Utter, Mackenzie Ringer, Susana Dietrickson, Julie Roberts, Ebenezer Ayamong, Carol Pierce, Natalie McCafferty, Camila Jalden Torita, Rochelle Middleton, and Richard Jesse. Now, there might not be enough seats, because some of you have three folks in each group, but I'll call the first group up will be, or first person, Warren Worth.
Good evening, School Board Chairman Latif, School Board members. My name is Warren Worth, and my address is on file with the clerk. Well, I want to tell the nurses, first off, you took my window away, because I was going to come up here and start out with, "I know you have a thankless job, and no one ever shows up here to thank you." So that threw that completely out the window in about 15 seconds of my time. But what I do want to talk about tonight has to do with bullying and cyberbullying. I've read through the Prince William County documents that are online that talk about it. As a parent of a child that goes to one of the schools here in Prince William County, this is something very near and dear to my heart, as my daughter was a victim of this last year. Now, I will say, I think our teachers, like our police officers, like everybody else in the community, are underappreciated and have a challenge today for which our teachers did not have at the time that we went through school. And I do appreciate that also as a retired law enforcement person myself. However, there comes, I think, one chance in a lot of our lives where we can make a difference, and I think this may be your time. And the reason I say that is, I think we need to adopt a zero tolerance. And why don't we have a zero tolerance? Why does a child need to repeatedly, more than three or four times, go to a staff member to say, "I am being bullied"? Because think about it like this, we even talk in our policies a little bit, and I say "we" because we are part of this county, so we are part of all of this. We talk about how a child can go at any time and should feel free to go at any time to talk to somebody about bullying. Okay, I would challenge each one of you right now to think about a time in your life as an adult when something didn't go right at your work, and you didn't even want to go to somebody in a position of authority because you were scared. You were afraid of retaliation. It's happened, whether we want to address it or not. Okay, now divorce yourself from being a 30, 40, 50-year-old person, and now you're a 12- or a 13-year-old child, young person. If we won't even do that as an adult because we fear retaliation, although we can put the words in there that they should not fear it, they're going to fear it. So I would say we need to strengthen. We need to toughen. We do not need to go online, I'm sorry, we do not need to find ourselves in the position like Marilyn did in 2013, where a mother had to start out on her own escapade and get Grace's Law enacted. Grace was a young 13-year-old girl who took her life after being bullied. We do not need a Tom's Law. We do not need a Suzie's Law. We need to take a stand today. It starts right here in Prince William County.
Thank you. Sarita Geider.
Good evening, Chairman Latif and Superintendent, Dr. Walts, and School Board members. My name is Sarita Geider, and my address is on file with the clerk. I am here tonight in concern for what happened at Hilton yesterday. I am a concerned parent, and I'm also part of the Prince William County family, Prince William County Schools family. I'm part of the faculty at Bevo Middle School. My daughter is a student at Hilton High School. As I've stated, I'm concerned about the safety of our children and of the staff and faculty of our schools. I'm here tonight with questions, concerns, and suggestions, and hoping that maybe we can really start a serious dialogue and move forward in some solution. I'm hoping, and I'm pretty sure that I am not the only one, and that there are a lot of us here right now that are highly concerned about what happened yesterday at Hilton High School. That being said, I'd like to know what the plans are moving forward in securing our children and staff while they're in school, and exploring more preventative measures and the possibilities of maybe installing metal detectors in aid for the resource officers that are already in place of the schools. Last night, I really had trouble sleeping, even though I was greatly, greatly gratified in knowing that none of the children or staff, anybody in the school was hurt. I still was mortified at the thought of what could have happened, and I tossed and turned all night, thinking of what could have happened, even though it's not a reality because it didn't happen. In my mind, it's a reality because we don't, in my opinion, have enough measures to prevent a tragedy. And I don't believe that we should wait until a tragedy actually takes out one of our loved ones, one of our valued members of our community. I don't believe we should wait for that. So I'm proposing that we start a dialogue, start concerns of installing metal detectors, or at least talking about what measures can be put in place as a preventative measure to keep our children, our staff, our faculty safe in their schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Bertrand.
Good evening, board. My name is Anthony Bertrand, and the clerk has my address on file. I come to you tonight as a concerned parent, sort of just like the guests before me. And my biggest concern, I had two children there that, yesterday, and it appears to me that there was a breakdown of something or another that didn't work properly. And I'm trying to figure out how much time lapsed between when you decided to lock the school down from when the event happened. And that's not answered to me, and I want to know why. And why did so much time happen, Mr. Walts? Why did we not secure the school? Why were children allowed to leave? This is a big problem. How does this gun go missing for five hours with hundreds of people looking for it? with hundreds of people looking for it? We got to do better. We have to do better, guys. And I look forward to your plan on how you're going to make it better. Thank you.
Gianna Jurak.
Hi, I'm a student at Hilton High School. I sat in the dark for three hours yesterday in my Spanish classroom because a kid brought a gun into the school. I've known this kid since seventh grade. His name is Michael. He sits in my homeroom class. Why was he allowed to bring a gun into the school in the first place? I know you couldn't have known. Obviously, it was in his backpack. But are we going to do something about it now? I mean, something could have happened in my homeroom class. He sits two seats away from me. Who's to say? In the press, it said it was an accident. Hilton students know it was not an accident. Who's to say that gun couldn't have been discharged near me or my friends? A girl in my class cried today because she thought the possibility of that happening. Why was there three hours we were locked down because they couldn't find a gun? What does that say about students and how they feel about talking to teachers? That they were so scared to tell them where the gun was or what happened in the classroom? Why didn't I know what happened? I understand you can't announce on the speakers, someone brought a gun into school. But could you not have sent the teachers an email saying what had gone down? I was sitting in my classroom thinking, oh, my gosh, there's an active gunman at my school. Am I going to die today? You all have kids. Do you want them sitting in their classrooms thinking, am I going to die today? I mean, this is really outrageous. I don't understand how this happens, especially at Hilton, of all places. You never think there's going to be a school shooting. And there wasn't a school shooting yesterday, thank God. But until it happens, my school environment will never be the same because of this. I will never feel the same safety as before. Do you guys get that, Dr. Walts? We all love you, but you coming to school yesterday, it wasn't, it was just a lot. Thank you.
Emily Utter, Mackenzie Ringer, and Susanna Dietrichson.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Emily Utter. My address is on file. And as supervisor of health and physical education, I would like to thank you for your continued support with health and physical education. May 1st through May 7th is National Physical Education and Sport Week. In honor of this week, we have a few students, a few of our students from Prince William County and teachers tonight to highlight experiences in physical education. From our high school Unified Sports, the following students are here. Natalie Chapman and Angelina Centafonte from Patriot High School, Mackenzie Ringer from Brentsville High School, Zachary Morris from Brentsville High School, both graduating seniors, and Susanna Dietrichson from Forest Park High School. Holly Touche, Brentsville High School, health and PE teacher and also Unified Coach for the last five years, is joining us. And I would like Susanna and Mackenzie to join the microphone and the other students and members can join me too.
Hello, Board. My name is Susanna Dietrichson and I play Unified Sports with Forest Park High School. I can say it was definitely one of the highlights of my year. My favorite part of Unified Sports was seeing everyone, specialized students, Gen Ed Unified Partners, and staff being so happy and enjoying themselves. The athletes get to be a part of sports they would not normally be able to participate in. They make new friends and they achieve goals. They see their basketball games and track meets as being the most important games of their lives. I am very familiar with the struggles of special needs individuals. I have three older siblings with autism. Two of them play Unified Sports at Forest Park and nothing makes me happier than seeing them do what they love. I see them struggle in so many ways and it makes me happy to see them happy. Unified Sports benefits so many people in so many ways. By participating as Unified Partner, I made new friends and was able to help others. The specialized students benefit by proving to themselves and others that they can do anything. The Unified Volunteers, student spectators, and staff also benefit from Unified Sports by getting to see real inclusion of the Unified Athletes. These are students who are often not in the popular crowds and sometimes in the shadows. Being a part of Unified Sports has made my freshman year of high school so much more fulfilling. And I'm so grateful to Coach McCann and the administration for allowing the program in the Forest Park and being able to participate in it. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Mackenzie and I'm a senior Brentsville District High School. I'm going to talk about how physical education and Unified has affected me for my four years at Brentsville. The Brentsville Physical Education Department helped me build the courage to try new things. The yearly criteria that is set for us mostly involves a different sport. The basketball unit made me want to try out for the team. My first time trying out, I made Diversity Squad. And I'm in my final year at BDHS. And I know for a fact with college, I'll be attending in the fall, but one thing was missing. I had no idea what I wanted to major in. During the summer before senior year, Ms. Touche encouraged me to join the Unified Basketball and Track Team and also help out in their classes. From my first day with them until now and so on, they impressed me every day. Just because of this one class, I made a lifelong friend, my buddy Zach. And I found that I wanted to pursue a career in physical education and come back to Prince William County to teach wonderful minds in the future. Thank you.
I would like to invite Carol Pierce and Julie Roberts to the podium, Health and Physical Education teachers.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Carol Pierce and my address is on file. I am currently the Physical Education Teacher and Department Chair at Parkside Middle School. And I too would like to thank you for your continued support for health and physical education. Dance, from line dancing to ballroom dancing, so many other forms of dance. It's an example of lifetime fitness activity that includes everyone and can be enjoyed by everyone. I like to share some exciting events in which Parkside students have showcased dance. Parkside was the first school that invited the dance guy, Mr. Patrick Carlton, to offer our 7th graders, students, ballroom dance lessons as part of our curriculum. We had two evening and community events, including a joint ballroom dance with Nokesville School. We were part of a two-year George Mason University Smart Research Program and project dealing with the success of the dance program among female students. Each year, we end our 8th grade creative dance unit with a program that promotes excitement through the entire 8th grade class. And finally, dance truly is a unified experience for all of our students. I'd like to read one letter from an 8th grade student regarding the dance unit. Dear Mrs. Pierce, my experience with dance unit was exciting and nerve-wracking. I got to see unique, creative, and cultural dances. I decided to challenge myself by doing a solo cultural dance and it was not easy. I overcame my fear by the support of my teachers and friends. I would do it again. I really enjoyed this unit. From your student, Beverly. P.S., thank you for letting me do my cultural dance. Through dance, our students meet standards in motor skill development, anatomical basis of movement, but most of all, social development. And most importantly, our students have fun. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, Dr. Walts, and School Board members. My name is Julie Roberts Melvin. My address is on file and I'm a physical educator from Grand Park Middle School in Dunfries. I can go on and on and on about how awesome our program is. Every year, we have Dr. Walts and Mr. Wilks come out for our annual triathlon. But we do really unique, cool things at Grand Park. We do biking, swimming, because we have a campus pool on our location. So the kids really, really look forward to that. And we teach lifetime fitness. So our kids really go out and live skills in lifetime fitness. And I have Ebenezer Ayman and he was one of my students at Grand Park. And he went on to college and now he's coming back looking for a PE job. And he's going to talk about how he enjoyed his physical education time at Grand Park.
Hi, my name is Ebenezer Ajiman. And one thing I want to talk about is I went, I grew, well, I was born in Alexandria and then I moved to Prince William County in middle school. And I was very blessed with the opportunity, you know, to play middle school sports. With that opportunity, with that opportunity, I went along, went to Forest Park High School and I played football there. Then I went to Norfolk State University on the Full Ride Scholarship to play Divisional Football. And I played safety in college. And from, you know, as a kid to a young man, I stand here today and tell you like, physical education and, you know, Prince William County middle school sports played a lot in my life and I'm very grateful for that opportunity. With that being said, I went to Grand Park and I actually coach there now. I'm a substitute teacher. And like she said, you know, I'm trying to, you know. But with that being said, so physical education, one thing I liked, you know, we did like Tabata songs. One thing I liked about it too, we had a swim pool in the backyard. That's what we called it at Grand Park. We did biking, archery, and, you know, my favorite sport is basketball and football. I'm very thankful to have a PE teacher and a role model and a mentor, Julie Roberts. Now I can call her by her first name. But yeah, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here and that's about it. Thank you.
And just to conclude, Natalie McCafferty is going to join us for the elementary.
Good evening, School Board members. I'm Natalie McCafferty and I am an elementary PE teacher at Beller Elementary School. And like Julie mentioned, I could sit here and talk about how much I love our program and our kids. And we also do a lot of fitness and fun. And we're laying the foundation for all these programs that you just heard about from the middle school and high school level. But we thought it'd be better to hear about it from our students. So I brought two of my amazing 4th graders. I have Rochelle Middleton and Camilla Hardin with me, or Jaldine, sorry.
Now, I am aware that not every person has the privilege to have such an amazing physical education teacher like I do. My physical, my physical education teacher, Ms. McCafferty, has given me the confidence to not be afraid about not being able to do a certain PE requirement. She helps all of the students at Beller with our rotations during class. She builds our confidence in many different ways. I'm very grateful to have her as an encore teacher and just a person in general. Personally, my favorite module, or module, I can't exactly say it, is wall sits. Even though they're not all that comfortable, they're still my favorite.
Hello, my name is Camilla and I just wanted to say how much I love my PE teacher. She always tries to motivate, motivate us. And if you don't get motivated, she'll try over and over again. And I love how every station, every fitness station is just 30 seconds or like, because I'm not very good at PE. So I'm very happy that it's only 30 seconds and now like one minute. And I just love how she motivates us when she puts music when we come in. And yeah, that's it. That's why I love my encore teacher.
Richard Jesse.
Good evening. My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. I just want to talk about a couple of things today. First of all, I think we have a great school system. And, you know, sometimes we forget some of the things that we need to say. But positively, PF, Prince William County School presentation really highlights some of the things that we do. And I think it's a great thing. I do want to say that we should not degrade some of the things that we're doing so well with things that we tout as being something really good. Every time I go to the website, I don't know if it's still there, reading the newspaper that this school system is 100%, accredited, I believe is the word. It bothers me because I know, and if you're on this board, you should know, that every school in the state, except for perhaps one, is accredited. And the reason for that is the standards were lowered to make everybody accredited. We are too good of a school system to put emphasis on something that we don't need. We have a lot of good things. In a professional learning community, we need to talk about, we should talk about the good things. But we need to talk about the things that are not working well. One of the biggest businesses in this county is tutoring companies. And they are not for the poor. They are not for the disadvantaged. Many of the highly paid citizens of this county, even though we have a great school system, are paying big bucks to send their kids for tutoring because they're not getting the education at the schools. And so I'm not saying that, again, we need to address what is wrong. We need to look at it and we need to be honest with ourselves. And we need to work on what we need to work on. We need to discuss where we have deficiencies and we need to come up with a plan to address them. Thank you.
So our last group will be, if they can come up to the front, Adrian Slaughter, Carolyn McNeil, Victoria Miranua, Lorraine Corbin Morales, and Riley O'Casey.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendents of high schools. I'm here, well, I'm Adrian Slaughter and I would like to briefly discuss the treatment of teachers in our classrooms. My address is on file with the clerk. Teachers have the right to be treated with respect and to work in an environment free from harassment and abuse. There are policies and procedures and rules in place in the PWCS Code of Behavior regarding students' conduct in our schools and classrooms. On page 31, it states that bullying of students is not permitted. But what about the bullying and harassment and abuse of our teachers by students? There are not any pages in the PWCS Codes of Behaviors that address specifically the national prevalent issue of students who harass, abuse, and bully teachers. Pages 23 and 24 explains that sexual harassment is not permitted. Those pages do not discuss discrimination and harassment of teachers. There is no complaint procedure that specifically addresses the consequences for students who harass and abuse teachers on a daily or weekly basis. Yes, teachers can give students referrals for inappropriate behaviors, classroom disruptions, improper dress, and other common offenses. But the procedures do not specifically address ongoing harassment, intimidation, fearing for your safety, and appropriate contact numbers to quickly access should problems arise. Some of the things that teachers do when faced with these issues is blame themselves and second guess their classroom management skills and/or they ignore the ongoing harassment. In many cases, there are students in our schools who have 20 to 50 referrals and are not suspended at all. These students go year to year and class to class using profanity, aggressively approaching teachers verbally or physically when things don't go their way. I would like to see an area in the Code of Behavior that addresses ongoing harassment of teachers so that students who engage in those behaviors know and understand the consequences. Workshops or events that engage in discussion between parents, students, and teachers about appropriate behavior in and out of school would be extremely helpful. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter, Ms. McNeil.
Hi there. My name is Carolyn McNeil and my address is on file. I'm here tonight to talk to you about ESP Day. That's next Wednesday, smack in the middle of Teacher Appreciation Week. And some of you may be wondering, what are ESPs? I'm here- I'm here to give you a little bit of an idea with some questions. Who keeps our schools safe, clean, and welcoming? Who cleans up messes no one else even dares to touch? Know it's getting real when they bring out the kitty litter. Those are our nation's custodians. They are dedicated. They serve an average of 12 years on the job, 78% plan to stay on until retirement. Who keeps our schools running smoothly? Who does everything from calming kindergarten parent fears to keeping the principal on schedule? That it would be our clerical services. 37% are responsible for giving out medications when there is no school nurse present. 80% volunteer in their community. Who keeps our students healthy and well-fed? Who makes the best crispy chicken sandwiches in the whole state? Am I right? They keep track of student allergies and adapt meals for students with special dietary needs. You know they are our food services staff. 34% have intervened to stop bullying behavior in their school. Para educators, oops, I gave it away. That's my group. Whether you call us paras, teacher aides, assistants, we give students the extra support they need to succeed from preschool all the way through to high school. There are over 800,000 of us in our nation's schools. 71% of us have given their own money to purchase food or school supplies for students. Back on track, who keeps our schools wired for the future? Who do you call when your smart board isn't working? That would be our technical services or IT. They mentor students and teachers in the use of the latest technologies. We have over 60,000 of them in our nation's schools. Who gets the students safely to and from school every day? Sometimes those bus drivers are the first smiling face some students will see. 52% of them work with special education students. And finally, who keeps our schools in great shape all year? They repair everything from the ceiling to the floor. That is maintenance. And there's another name for it, I don't remember it. 36% of those have given their own money to purchase school or supplies or food for their students. May I please have all ESPs in the room stand to be recognized? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil. Victoria Miranua, did I say that right?
Miranda.
Say it again.
Miranda.
Oh, Miranda, sorry.
My name is Victoria Miranda. My information is on file with the clerk and I am a student at CD Hilton High School. Today I would like to discuss our crisis management and response to gun violence at our schools. Yesterday, a person, a student with a gun walked into our school, was allowed to, was allowed to shoot a gun in the classroom, traumatized multiple students while they should have been given extraction time. And after the incident, students were told not to speak about it, not to talk about it, move on with their lives, and get out of the classroom. A class change happened in the time between the incident occurred and when we were actually notified of any trouble in our school. The incident occurred around 12 o'clock and we were on lock-in at 2:00. At 2:00, a whole two hours between when the incident happened and when we had any inkling of understanding that there was something wrong. From that point on, we had no understanding of what was actually occurring at our school. We sat there in fear, trembling, wondering what was about to happen to us. It is not the responsibility of any student at any school in an environment in which they should have felt safe to fear for their lives and to not have understood, not have known what was going on in the school that they were in. Parents were afraid, our teachers were confused, nobody knew what was going on. We relied on text messages and social media to understand that we were in fact safe in our school environment. And it says something about the desensitization of gun violence in our schools, of our students, that all our response was, to us being on national television and to us being all over the news, was that nobody died. It is not the responsibility of our school board and of our administration to deal with these issues before, it is not the responsibility of them to deal with these issues after people have died. They should be dealt with immediately, they should have been dealt with before this incident was allowed to occur. This boy should not have been allowed to bring a gun into our school, fire into a trash can, and have that bullet ricochet into the ceiling where it could have possibly hurt somebody, and not tell us for two hours, keep us in lockdown for another four hours without any understanding of what was happening and while they could not find a gun. It was not until about 4, it was not until about 4:30 that we were told that the police would have to conduct a full investigation before we could leave. Some of us had after-school activities, some of us needed to go places, some of us needed to go see our families. And our families were not allowed to see us until 6:00. This was an absurd mismanagement, miscommunication, and negligence of the situation that had occurred. And it is, it is not our, it should not have been our jobs to worry for our lives while our administration could not even be bothered to communicate with our schools. And yesterday, as I mentioned on Twitter, I requested information to be spread and no information was spread other than the vague statement of that security had been contacted.
Thank you. Lorraine Corbin Morales.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Walts, and the senior staff. I want to say thank you to all of you for what we experienced last night, what we've been trying to get past, and we did. But I want, right at this moment, if I can get your permissions, to wave my time to the president of our PWA. Thank you.
Riley O'Casey.
I did sign up. Good evening, Dr. Latif, board members, Dr. Walts. My name is Riley O'Casey and my address is on file. As the president of the Prince William Education Association, we stand in solidarity with the students and staff at Hilton High School. It's been a tough week. They lost a staff member to cancer on Monday, a very dear and caring soul, and then the frightening experience on Tuesday. PWEA commits to its members the opportunity to meet and share their concerns. Despite this, there is much to celebrate. Today, May 1st, is May Day, the celebration of International Workers' Day. Today, we honor those who fought for the middle class for eight-hour days, weekends, equal pay, health insurance, safety in the workplace, and so much more. Tonight, we also celebrate the passing of the advertised tax rate, which will fully fund the budget developed by this division and adopted by this board. A budget that honors the work of PWCS employees. There are so many bonuses in this budget and on behalf of the members of the Prince William Education Association, I thank Dr. Walts and the school board for listening and acting. The collaboration, communication, and conversation brought us this far, but we must keep it going. PWEA will continue our efforts to work with the division and the school board. I urge you to continue to reach out to us as well. Only then will we realize the real change needed for our students, teachers, and our support staff. Tonight's presentation of the changes to the conflict of interest policy brought many to the table. I'd like to thank Amy White, Associate Superintendent of HR, for including PWEA on the task force. The input from all parties involved was crucial to the development of this new policy. We cannot forget what workers went through in the past to make life easier for us today. What we must do is continue to move forward, collaborating, communicating, and having those much-needed, honest, and realistic conversations.
Next will be superintendent's time. Dr. Walts.
Thank you, Chairman Latif and members of the board. So part of what we sometimes do at the board meeting, we do a lot of listening. And one people, one of the things that people have a right to is sign up for three minutes to come and speak unchallenged or, you know, you're free to say anything you want, nobody's going to interfere with what you have to say. So I want to start off, you know, usually I have lots of very positive things and I have a number of positive things to say tonight as well. But I want to talk just a little bit about the Hilton incident, and I had planned to do that before anyone spoke tonight. So I use those pre comments just to say that my comments are not in response directly to anyone who has spoken tonight. They are simply my remarks. So first of all, I want to acknowledge the very frightening event that took place. Nobody is discounting that at all. I am a parent of a high school student myself who goes to Prince William County. And whether or not that were true, it would still be a frightening and horrifying event. And safety is something we are constantly striving to do better, to improve, to make enhancements to buildings, to have secured entrances, to have sign-ins that go through people's, you have to put your license out. There are literally hundreds of things that go into student safety and staff safety as well. All of that being said, we are constantly looking to improve what happens. So part of any incident like this, and when I say incident, I'm not saying that lightly, is just a term that's used when there's some kind of a very bad thing that goes on. Part of what we do is we go through a complete review with the police department of every single thing that went on. What was the timeline? Who did what? Who did what when? Why did they do those things? Were there any things that could be done differently? Are there any things that could be done better? So I assure you, as we do with any critical incidents like this, we will have that kind of a review. So I'll give you an example that goes back one year prior to my arrival. There was a major incident at Bull Run Middle School and guns were brought into that building. I hadn't been superintendent, I don't think, 30 minutes, it didn't seem like, before I was invited over by the chief of police, Chief Dean at that time. And I was invited to sit in a review of every single thing that happened at Bull Run Middle School that day. All the pictures that were taken, pulled from the cameras, all the steps that everybody went through. So that is something that we take very, very seriously. Another reason that I said this was not in direct response to anything that especially that the students said is I understand that this is discombobulating. It is frightening. It is terrorizing. And when you're upset, you're going to have strong feelings. So I've had the whole array of things deep into last night. Myself and members of the staff were working deep into the night. It was almost as bad as a bad snow day call or snow day night, the lateness of the hour, because we were following up on each and every other thing that had occurred. There were, these things often trigger other threats that are jokes. Well, they're not really jokes. They might be to the person who creates a creative Snapchat or something like that, but they are followed up, every single one of them. We literally had communications people who got up at 1:30 in the morning to get the final letter out to the Colgan community to let them know that the last item had been verified, that it was not a legitimate threat. Earlier in the night, it was still night, but we were able to do the same thing for Benton and Osborne Park today. So these things are, these things are terrible. And nobody wants anyone to be unsafe anywhere, let alone in a school building. So I say these things to let you know that I personally, along with my staff, and I assure you, the school board, take these matters very seriously. In the first year that I was here, the school board supported, along with myself, to create a Safe Schools Task Force. And that was so successful in researching and coming up with ways to improve safety and security in our school division, that here 14 years later, that is still one of the most active and a well-attended study committees that we have. And we have implemented over 100 recommendations as a result of that, basically that, what started as a task force. We have first responders on that task force, school administrators, parents, security, risk management people, all of those folks and others who contribute their best ideas and research best practice in order to try to make sure our schools are safe. One of the most difficult things that happens in a crisis is there are certain protocols that have to be followed. And sometimes those are difficult to understand or impossible to understand when you're going through them. So for example, yesterday at Hilton, just as soon as I was contacted, I was away, I was over toward the Route 1 area, I immediately got into my car and drove over to Hilton. Members, many members of my staff were already there. There was a huge presence from the police force. They have a lot of resources in our police force, a lot of very specialized people. And those people know how to break down and investigate. Now, you also have to remember, this is a school that has over 2,000 students. So you have to very systematically do things when you're in a crisis situation. So we had the student and we had that student quarantined with the police, but we needed to make sure we could find the weapon. And when I say we, it wasn't me, it was the police. The police do all of those kinds of things. But that was, that was a major undertaking to get that to happen. Now, all of the, all of the time that this is going on, and again, this is, this is not to refute anything that was said, but I even helped the principal to write the messaging that was said over the PA system. It may have been that there was a room that didn't have the PA on, I'm not sure, but to the best of my knowledge, we communicated that everyone was safe because we knew we had the student apprehended. And so again, when you're in crisis, sometimes it's, it kind of is all a blur. But we also, including my own text messaging, social media, the email system, we sent school board updates, we sent, every time we had pertinent information, we sent out communications using all of those methodologies, including social media, in an effort to try to make it as, as good as we possibly could. I know I've gotten a lot of, some feedback today and late into the night about the messaging that said, "You're safe." But if you don't feel safe, it's hard to hear that you're safe. You're scared. But what I want people to understand is we wouldn't tell kids and parents and the community that they're safe over and over and over unless we knew they were. The reason we knew they were was we had the student. We didn't have the weapon. So we ended up getting the weapon. It was a long ordeal. Thank God, everybody was safe. So all of that being said, there were a lot of people that I thought worked incredibly well together. Before I talk about them, I just want to review for you something I've said twice already. We will go through a reflection of every single thing that occurred to see if anything should be done differently should something like that happen again. It also may be helpful to know that the police have released a very detailed, basically it's a timeline, it describes the events in quite a lot of detail. And you can easily go on the Prince William County Police website, I encourage students to do it, and I encourage parents and interested community members. And it gives a pretty big overview, a pretty in-depth overview of what it, what went on and why it took that amount of time. So I was very pleased that Chief Bernard released that last night to the public. I want to take a moment now on the, on the positive side of thing, because, side of things because a crisis always brings out the very best of people as well. And yesterday was no exception to that. The best people, the people at Hilton demonstrated some amazing courage yesterday. I went onsite, I saw firsthand the professionalism of the response. I cannot praise highly enough the students, the teachers, the staff, who demonstrated remarkable calm and patience. students, the teachers, the staff, who demonstrated remarkable calm and patience as the police conducted their investigation. Now, I want to say something else that I think perhaps a lot of people don't know. When something becomes a crime scene, a potential crime scene, the police take over at that point. So, just so you know, it becomes a police matter, and then they have very strict protocols of what they do in order to investigate and to ensure that everybody is safety, safely, safe, and that they collect all the information that is necessary. So I want to thank Chief Bernard and the entire Prince William County Police Department for their efforts. I want to thank our crisis counselors who supported the school today. Our top priority is to ensure our students feel safe and that they feel supported. Additionally, I want to thank our entire transportation team. Remember, we transport about 66,000 students. So in a school of, of, say, 2,200, I think that's about the enrollment of Hilton, a lot of students ride the bus. And they did an amazing job. They modified the schedules, they kept their second and third runs on time, and then they all came back and ran late runs to run all the students home, once it was safe to exit the building, and that the police had confiscated the weapon. We have well-established crisis plans, and following this incident, again, we will work with our law enforcement partners. We do this together. And there will be a review, and we will apply any lessons learned to improve any of our current plans moving forward. So again, I'm sorry that that took so long, but I think in a case like this, it's important to have, to face it directly and head-on. And, you know, again, I love talking about the positive things going on in the school system, and I'll switch to that in a moment. But, you know, it's not the most enjoyable thing to have four press conferences with all those cameras in one day, but it is part of the job. And again, I just want to thank my, my friend and colleague, Chief Bernard, for working with me and standing up in front of those press conferences, four of them, and that, that no one was hurt in the end. So I'm going to switch to something very powerfully positive, and that is next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And although, and I love the fact that some, one of the speakers got up here and talked about so many other of our great employees. It's great to talk about teachers because they're absolutely the centerpiece of our instructional program. So I wish you all well on Teacher Appreciation Week. We appreciate what you do each and every day with my child and every other person's children in our school division. In other news, last Thursday, Ms. Ralston and I had the opportunity to be a part of a fun surprise at Minneville Elementary School. While the school was celebrating a School of Excellence Award, the Executive Director of the Virginia Association of Elementary School Principals announced that Nathaniel Provincio, Principal, and Deborah Ellis, Assistant Principal of Minneville, were named the National Distinguished Principal of the Year and National Distinguished Assistant Principal, Assistant Principal of the Year, respectively. That is the first time in the 45-year history of the Virginia Association of Elementary School Principals that the recipients of both of those prestigious awards were selected from the same school, in the same district, in the same year. So congratulations. I also enjoyed a visit to the beautiful Potomac High School baseball field for a game between Forest Park and Potomac. It was a great game. And Mrs. Covington, not the Mrs. Covington on the school board, but her daughter-in-law, served up some tasty food. And I was actually able to sit in Mr. Covington's chair. He was not at the game that night, and he has his own special chair right between the two fields. Thanks for the invitation. Speaking of food, new this year to the annual Virginia Breakfast Challenge in the Gold category, and PWCS is the only school division in the state of Virginia that attained it this year. The program recognizes schools and school divisions for increased participation in their breakfast programs. Schools were invited to demonstrate how they go above and beyond to serve breakfast to students. Schools earned points on their Gold Category Scorecard by demonstrating improved meal quality, hosting breakfast events, and/or implementing new and interesting strategies to take their school breakfast to the next level. Congratulations to Adam Russo and all of our food service employees for working so hard to ensure our students are served a high-quality breakfast. I spent most of the day last Friday at Woodbridge with the Vikings. I shared my experiences with leadership with three different leadership classes. We met with several individual students who reached out to me on Twitter. I was joined by Mrs. Jessie, the, right here, who's, that is in her district, and met the Viking Colonels, and we had a good time. The Viking Colonels served us some popcorn. And again, thank you, Mrs. Jessie, for joining me on that, and Mrs. Ralston for over at Minneville. That evening, I returned to experience Seussical the Musical. The audience was provided with a night of fun and fantasy that only a writer like Dr. Seuss could inspire. I was very impressed with the costumes, makeup, cast, and all of the behind-the-scenes important details. Great job. Monday, Monday, I'm turning to Sassan. And I got to tell you, our own student board member gave a very impressive presentation out of Patriot High School, along with members of his class. So I got to see his presentation, and I listened to the compelling research project of Sassan Farage, our student board member entitled, "Majority, Minority: What's the Difference?" Given the diversity of our great county of Prince William, it was very compelling, timely, and informative. So thank you very much for that. And to have one minute of fun, I want to conclude with a video that features the hospitality and fantastic students and staff at Woodbridge High School. Roll the video.
Right now, the students are studying for their state board exam, which leads to licensure. So when they leave here today, they'll leave with their kids to Manikins. And on Monday, we will go to Springfield to Comfort Inn for them to take their state board exam. They've been preparing for this for two years. So at the end of this, they will be licensed cosmetologists if they pass that exam.
We're making popcorn for the staff. We sell it to support our special ed programs and also teach the kids life skills, to teach them about money, a feeling of success, accomplishment, that they're creating something, they're making something, and they're seeing the
Figure out, how can you take your leadership skills and actually help other people? Because one thing that I've learned as a school superintendent is there's a lot of people that need a lot of help.
I didn't realize how famous he was.
It's crazy.
Somebody came in and called him a kid.
I have all these nicknames, don't I? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Next, we'll move on to Board Matters 1901, Revision of the Policy 503.01 Conflict of Interest, First Reading, Amy White.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, Dr. Walts. Tonight, I have the pleasure of sharing with you the recommendations of stakeholders concerning draft policy 503.01-1 Conflict of Interest and proposed regulation 503.04-1 Conflict of Interest. With me tonight is Roger Dalek, whom I'm sure you all know, a very experienced former principal from Garfield High School, who partnered with me throughout the process. The recommendations I'll share with you tonight are based upon the additional vetting you requested on September The administration's draft proposal for the committee's structure and membership was shared with you on October 12th and approved with board input at the November 7th school board meeting. The additional input included opportunities for school board members to appoint a member to the committee and allowed for additional meetings if the two scheduled were not sufficient. In response to your direction, we reached out to central office personnel, building administrators, advisory councils, boosters, professional organizations, and community members, and formed a committee of about 53 stakeholders to address the task. Prior to and at the first meeting, participants were sent the current and proposed policy, draft regulation and FAQs, disclosure forms, VHSL guidelines, sample PWCS rubrics, and a link to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act. At the first meeting, the committee was addressed by Gary Manus, our internal auditor, who advised the group that it would be impossible to eliminate all risk or to develop a checklist of every scenario that could possibly happen, so the regulations and guidelines implemented should be practical and reasonable. Carol Marchand, Assistant Division Counsel, shared certain types of conduct that are improper: hiring family members, accepting gifts or business opportunities that are intended to influence the employee's performance of a public duty, or using a public position to retaliate against someone. The school board may also prohibit additional actions that raise the appearance of impropriety, and thus the three questions we centered our discussion around. These three major question categories were posed to stakeholders and revisited at each meeting. Number one, what do you consider conflict, potential conflicts of interest? Which types have the potential to be the most serious? It was critical to first identify what people consider actual versus perceived conflicts of interest, and important to get specific examples as well, as so the group can then put them into categories. Number two, what can and should PWCS do to best mitigate appearances of conflict of interest, favoritism, and undue influence without impeding the ability of employees, Prince William County Schools, to provide valuable student and parent-desired outcomes? The trickiest part is determining acceptable solutions for addressing actual and potential conflicts in a way that is meaningful but not too restrictive. Stakeholder suggestions have led to a robust and living FAQ document. And what suggestions do you have for the draft regulation 503.4-1 Conflict of Interest? It was important, then, to get consensus on the specifics of the regulation itself so that it could be applied consistently. The regulation needs to be clear and understandable, and the FAQ document would be a companion to provide examples and context. Each meeting was structured similarly but with key differences. Session one started with LIKE stakeholder collaboration groups: school administrators, parents and community members, coaches and athletic directors, teachers, so that issues could be identified from a variety of perspectives. We clustered the feedback into categories of what the stakeholders perceived as potential conflicts: inequitable access, outside vendors, favoritism, financial gain, inequitable selection, assignment, and criteria, and playing time. Facilitators kept discussion focused on the three critical questions, especially identifying those issues they considered the most serious. Session two, varied stakeholder collaboration, allowed for a review of the conflicts identified in the first session by LIKE teams, and for discussions about what practical controls would mitigate real or perceived conflicts, so that we could begin moving toward consensus on the philosophy behind the regulation. Jennifer Casada and Tim Neal from the Office of Accountability guided our data collection and analysis to include a survey gizmo that went out to all stakeholders electronically after the second meeting, which chunked the policy and regulation into sections and invited their comments and suggestions on each part. The feedback was used to fine-tune the draft documents for discussion at session three. Session three, again, varied stakeholder collaboration, allowed for a final review of the deliverables: FAQ, regulation, policy, and group discussion after individual review of the revised documents. The pictures on the slide, slideshow document that consensus was achieved around the three documents. More discussion ensued about what we would put in place if the policy was approved. Outcomes. These are some of the highlights of our draft policy and regulation. It is aligned to the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act. It prohibits employees from taking advantage of PWCS relationships for personal gain. Supervisors may not engage in financial relationships with employees. Teachers cannot privately tutor current students unless randomly assigned via an outside agency. Employees, including coaches, may not solicit or pressure students to participate in an outside entity in which the employee has a personal interest. Favoritism shall not be extended to any vendors, and employees may not have a personal input, in, interest in a contract with PWC other than their own contract. Limited exceptions with disclosure. Additional outcomes, and these were beyond what we had in place in the fall. These are the additional steps we're recommending be put in place as a result of our stakeholder input. Specifically, there will be a change to both the supplemental and athletic contract verbiage, where we clarify that, for an example, an employee cannot solicit, pressure, direct, nor require PWCS students to participate in any outside coaching, training, instruction, or related service conducted by any business organization or other entity in which he or she has a personal interest and shall provide full prior disclosure of any potential conflict of interest regarding such business organization or other entity. All employees who receive a supplemental or athletic contract will be required to review and document training on the Conflict of Interest regulations. Supervisors, such as the principal or AD, will have to approve, monitor, and document their employees' disclosure forms, meaning they will have to agree that efforts to mitigate appearance of conflict of interest are appropriate. And there will be a standing committee that will conduct random audits of disclosure forms and hold quarterly meetings to address issues, and more importantly, identify and share best practices among our schools. In closing, I'd like to thank the more than 50 stakeholders who gave their time and expertise to provide this feedback to our school board, and of course, Mr. Dalek, who partnered with me during the process. It was an amazing group of people to work with. And if any of you are still in the audience tonight, please stand up and be recognized. Finally, policy 503.01 Conflict of Interest is being submitted for the first reading. Finally, Policy 503.01, Conflict of Interest, is being submitted for the first reading, subsequent to additional vetting by stakeholders as directed by the school board. The revised policy is aligned with the provisions of the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act and the Virginia Public Procurement Act, Ethics in Public Contracting. Legal references have been updated.
So I will start. Thank you, Ms. White, this is fantastic. Mr. Dalek, I know when we put this committee together, I was criticized for the size of the committee and the scope of what you had to do, but I want to thank you for the hard work, and I've talked to the committee members, and I know a lot of work went into this, so I can't thank you all enough for looking at this very important issue. I'm going to start with the first set of questions, if you don't mind. So on the outcome slide, you have developed draft policy regulation highlights, specifically employees may not solicit or pressure students to participate in outside entity, favoritism shall not be extended to any vendors, and employers may not have personal interest in a contract with PWCS other than their own. How do we enforce these?
That's a great question, and really, it's about training and commitment. We are dedicated to work with our ADs and our principals and our central office administrators to make sure we are very clear with what is allowed and what isn't allowed in this regulation. I think if we do audits of the disclosure forms, which every coach or teacher who has a supplemental contract will have to fill out and will have to have it approved and monitored by their administration, that will be the first step in making sure we're all on the same page. We'll also have a standing committee that will meet, the legal counsel will be part of that committee, so we'll be meeting to do these random audits and to design training opportunities for all employees, because every employee in the division is responsible to know, understand, and comply with this act.
Second question, what happens if you break one of these commitments? So say you are caught soliciting the students to participate in your camp.
Well, I probably can't go into the weeds with that. My assumption would be we'll have to look at each situation individually, but if we see that people are not in alignment, not in compliance with the regulation, there should be a disciplinary action, and a supplemental contract is an at-will contract. So at any point, the administrator can decide having this contract with his employees is not in the best interest of our kids.
So we could terminate the contract immediately?
Yes.
Other questions? Ms. Jessie.
I think I have more comments than questions, and maybe one recommendation. First of all, I read this, and it is very, very comprehensive, and the process was very systematic, and I just love the FAQ page, and I think that's a page that everyone should have. You know, principals always give out a handbook at the beginning of the year, and I don't know if it's in that format, but I think that you need some assurance that everyone in that building has read this, and therefore, because it keeps them from getting in trouble, because most people are not thinking about some of the things that they're doing. But when I looked at, I, but you're literature-based anyway, because I've known you for a long time, so it's written in easy language, it's reader-friendly language, because when you get into policies and procedures, I like the way you took terms and the questions that you have about your work on the job, question related to tutoring, if you're working as an employee for Prince William County, and if you have a business with Prince William County. I think these are questions that everyone should have at their disposal. So my recommendation is that, not only that we get at least the FAQs in the hands of everyone, but have some way of, I think Dr. Latifah said, how do we implement, and some way of assuring, you know, back in the day, of course, when you had the handbook, people had to sign off that they had received it. But I consider this document to be so well-written and comprehensive that I think that every teacher should have it in his hand. Thank you. I thought, fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilk.
Hi, Ms. White. Thank you, Mr. Dalek, too. I appreciate it, and thank you, everyone on the committee who participated in this. Quite a large group, and I did pick someone also to serve on the committee. I spoke with him, spoke with a couple, one AD from one of the two high schools that participated in this, to get some feedback and hear more about the process, and they said it was very, you know, word Miss Jessie was using, comprehensive, very detailed, collaborative. I liked when you told me about, you know, how originally, you know, you had the different kind of groups, whether it be parents, or teachers, or coaches, or stakeholders, the various stakeholders kind of give their opinions initially on how they felt about a couple, you know, topics and questions, and then as the process evolved, they started kind of mixing, I guess, in a sense, and working with each other and collaborating on their ideas and what they felt about the policy, and that's where you guys ultimately, I think you showed with some of those pictures, came to that more or less consensus. Just one quick question, does the current supplemental contract include language explicitly prohibiting the solicitation of the, so the current one currently?
The draft one, the one we have drafted as a result of this committee includes all of that.
The one, I'm sorry, but the one currently, right now, does not?
I'll have to look at it again. I don't want to say anything and be incorrect. It's much stronger language in this one.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you for the work.
So, you know, as with any first reading, everyone, please take a look at this. We will have the second reading at the next meeting. Any questions? You know, I appreciate your work. The committee did a terrific job. I can tell you, in speaking to some of the folks that I know on that committee, they shared with me that I think everyone on the committee recognizes the privilege it is to work with our students here in Prince William County. Everyone on the committee recognized the spirit and the privilege it is to work with Prince William County Schools, and I think everyone on the committee recognized that to break the trust and the integrity that they're given when they're working with our schools and our students would be wrong. And I think that spirit was demonstrated in the work done by the committee. My concerns will continue to be the enforcement of this policy. The level of tolerance with which the board and the school administration will deal with when these policies are not followed, I think, will be important. And with anything else, I think, as we look at this, all things can evolve and continue to improve. So I can't thank you enough for this work, and we'll have the second reading next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to, that's it, folks, it'll be Board Matters. We will start on Ms. Satterwhite's side this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Dr. Waltz, I want to thank you for giving that very thorough summary of what happened yesterday, and thank you to all of your staff for all the time that you put in making sure and continuing the investigation and make sure that we're doing things right and what we can improve. I appreciate that. I appreciate the level of detail. Thank you. I do want to comment on Teacher Appreciation Week next week, and as we heard during Citizen Comment Time, we heard about ESP Day. I want to thank everyone who works with our students with Prince William County Schools. You do make a difference in our kids, and it's a difference that lasts a lifetime. So thank you so much for everything you do for our kids. I want to recognize Ronald Reagan Middle School and Battlefield High School's archery teams. They just competed this past weekend in Salt Lake City in a national archery, national championship for archery. Ronald Reagan Middle School brought home a national championship in 3D in Bullseye, and Battlefield High School's team, that's not as old as Ronald Reagan's team, but that team brought home also a national championship in Bullseye in 3D, and we are so very proud of them, and congratulations to all of the students for all of your hard work and all of your practice. And I also want to thank Mountain View Elementary School for putting on a great 5K and fun run on Saturday, had a great time seeing all the kids there and visiting with parents. Thank you so much, PTO, for putting that on.
Mr. Gil Trentum of the Brentsville District.
Not paying attention, are you? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I just want to say, first off, once again, Dr. Waltz, like I said, and thank the administration and the staff for all the work and for the, at the incident at Hilton yesterday afternoon. It was, you know, very trying for a lot of people, but I think we did a very good job. Just remind everybody, if you're following it, you don't need to be reminded, we are in the middle of high school boundaries. Last night, we had the community meeting at Stonewall Jackson High School, received a lot of good feedback. There is one plan out on, there's the first plan out on the 13th High School Boundary Portal, which you can find on the website. One thing I tell everybody is the first plan is really, it's a start of a discussion at a point of departure. We never, never approve the first plan on something like this, so it's going to change. There will be one, at least one more, probably multiple more. So the next, the next community meeting is on Thursday, May 16th, at 7:00 at Patriot High School, so I would encourage everybody to keep your eye on the portal, email if you have any questions, and join us on Thursday evening. Thank you.
Ms. Diane Ralston.
Thank you. I need them to turn on the, yeah. It's not a big movie. It's a small movie. Last week, Dr. Waltz and I made a visit to the Beville Middle School to congratulate the Imperial Step Team under the direction of Ms. Bo Tang. The Imperials recently won first place in the Dominion High School Annual Stomp Fest. The theme of the stomping is anti-bullying and promoted love. We have a brief video to showcase the hard work. Roll the video.
Sit back in your chair, because we stop, you'll stop, and stay. Stop! We need not only to help one another, but to love one another through all the trials and tribulations, for we are the future leaders, need to uplift one another, because when
Thank you. That's it. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Next, we miss Jessie.
I had an opportunity to meet, to be in the audience with the King at Woodbridge High. He also has another title.
Royal?
Goat, greatest of all times. So it was very refreshing to watch Dr. Waltz interact with kids. He's very good with kids, and he made everyone feel very comfortable, but he's not kidding. He's famous. We went into the hallway, and everybody was asking for his autograph. In fact, tonight, may I have your autograph? Sir? But I, he said to me that the people in communications recommended that he get on Twitter, and I'm told that you were at Obridge, and everyone there loved having you there, and I just want to thank him and Wayne Mallot, who is not here, for all they've done for Woodbridge High School. That school is very old, and I know people were saying, why are they in this boardroom? They were in the boardroom because sometimes a lot of people coming in allows us as a board to see that this is a problem and that they're serious about it. The nurses came in, and so did the Woodbridge team, the Woodbridge people. So I want to thank everyone who supported Woodbridge, and I also went to see the play. The King had a role on stage, I'm told, because I didn't go to the same one. Weren't you a part of the play, sir, or Your Majesty?
A small, small bit parts, yes.
Yes. So I was not asked to be on stage, so I know I'm not the Queen. But we, when you talk to kids, you really get a sense of what's really going on. And the other thing was the budget. I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting, and I announced that I was not there to represent the school board. I was there as a board member because I really wanted them to know that this board had expectations, and I really just didn't want them to change their minds, although I think sometimes they've already made up their minds, but to all the ladies in red, you were there and you really represented teachers well at that meeting. And I think that is really, oh, the retirement ceremony. Attended the retirement ceremony and met a lot of people, a lot of teachers and friends that are leaving the system, and it was really good to see them leaving, and they were happy that, not that they were leaving, but that they were going to another type of life. And I want to give a shout-out to Scouse Calhoun and his wife, who are retiring together, and also to Mrs. Emon, Mr. Emon's wife, who has the reputation of being one of the best teachers in Prince William County. And it was glad, I was really, I met your daughter, and I met her and had to chat with her. She is really very well-appreciated by everyone in Prince William County. Thank you very much.
Ms. Lori Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to go not only as a board member, because I am one, but as a parent to Cook's Around the World Competition at Disney. We sent two high schools, Potomac High School and Patriot High School, both are which pictured here, and Prince William County Schools was not only represented in the most professional manner, but very well by all of the students who attended. There were a total of 12 awards that the students could win. Prince William County brought home three of the 12. Patriot High School won for their side dish as well as their entree, and this is Potomac High School. They were gracious enough to let my mini-me shadow them during the picture, but they won for creativity, which is an all-around judges award. I just can't say enough about how well these students conducted themselves at Disney. I am oh-so thankful, as a parent, to Chef Evans, who is just one of the most tremendous mentors for our students. It was an exceptional team. I'd like to give them all a shout-out, because I said that I would. Ms. Lanay Barber, Lanaja, I'm sorry, excuse me, Barber, Destiny Bell, Hannah Chason, Aliyah Hunt, Adrian Knight, Kelly Minetta, Matthew Murphy, James Schofersphere, Catherine Ware, Abigail Wirtman, and my son Lee Williams were all in attendance for this event. It was really a fantastic and special time. I'd like to give Chef Evans a personal, very large thank you for allowing myself and my mother to help with the team and prep before they were competing. They competed at a total of time for 90 minutes. There were over 50 schools from across the nation that these students had to compete against. They had an AM and a PM showing for teams. That was probably the most stressful and fastest. That was probably the most stressful and fastest 90 minutes of my life, so I know it was for them. It was really something to see, and for me personally, as a mother, it was an exceptional opportunity to be able to see my son not just look like my son, but an adult, a professional, working in his element, and that was just absolutely amazing. So I wanted to congratulate all of the students for all of their hard work and for representing our county well. In addition to that, I did miss the retirement ceremony, which is something I like to attend. I wanted to give a big shout-out to Ms. Haley, who is an English teacher at Woodbridge High School. She was very instrumental for me, being a creative person in high school, and I will never forget the impact that she had on my life. As always, it's a pleasure to hear our students come and speak before the board and share their insights, their feelings, their opinions about what's going on in our school system. They are the reason why we are here, and I always appreciate the time and effort and the courage it takes to come and speak before us. And I just wanted to, again, thank the nurses, and last but not least, I know I'm out of time, but because it is Teacher Appreciation Week, I would be very remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to poke a little fun at Dr. Healy, the principal of Colkin High School, because he was, in fact, my 10th grade English teacher, and I always love reminding him that I still read Shakespeare to this day, and it is because of him, he's partly responsible for me sitting here today, continuing my education and my love of learning. So having a great teacher can have a long-lasting effect on a student's life, and I'm very proud to say that it came from here in Prince William County Schools, and I'm thankful that I'm able to return the service, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, just want to say thank you again. This is a really cool certificate to have, and so thank you to all of our nurses. We appreciate all that you do for us. Last Saturday was one of the exciting events in the district. Friday, as some of you all may remember, we had a lot of rain, some really bad wind and rainstorms come through, and so we were happy to have a bright, sunny, cheery day for the annual Kyle Wilson Memorial Walk there over at Hilton High School. It was a packed track, a lot of great vendors, a lot of money raised with some really cool raffles, and just an exciting community time there. And so, and then Tuesday, want to thank Mr. Wilk for being at Hilton as well, as we were there to support our staff. Thank you again to all of our staff for everything that they did throughout the day on Tuesday. And then from there, went to the Boundary Meeting over at Stonewall Jackson High School, and we had, as we do at town halls, we had a packed attendance, a lot of people who came to share their thoughts. I appreciate that from everyone. We will be taking those into consideration, but there will be numerous plan iterations as we go forward. We will be working to both respect community interests and community concerns and thoughts, as well as taking advantage of the added capacity and significantly reducing trailers. And so we look forward to continue working through that process, and thank you, everyone, as they share their thoughts.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been a very busy week, but a good busy week. First, want to thank my wife for my absence at home, as I've been at events a lot this week. Want to quickly go through, and for anyone who knows me, I'm very hands-on, and I like to be involved as much as possible in my schools. I did pay a visit to Potomac Middle School, Mary Williams Elementary School over the weekend. Dumfries Elementary had a great community fair over on Saturday, a lot of participants. I want to thank the Young Marines for helping and volunteering at that event, and all the people who came out at that event as well. Want to thank the Southbridge Community, which includes and encompasses Swans Creek, for their great community day that I attended after the Dumfries event. Want to thank a couple other events. Ashland Elementary had a great multicultural night. That was a fun event. More and more, Principal Jack's saying, like last year, they had 20 countries. This year, it's expanded to 30 different countries represented. Very great event for inclusion and having all the kids participate in the school. Henderson Elementary had their annual spring fling, which I was able to attend. It was like pandemonium there, lots of kids, a lot of families, very excited. I also then was at Henderson Elementary last night at a town hall hosted by the delegate Elizabeth Guzman. For anyone who knows and follows this for the past 10-plus years, when I first came on the board, which was not 10 years ago, but three years ago, but I got brought into this fun, the Henderson community has been advocating for some type of four-way stop or stop signs at lights or stop signs at this very busy intersection at their school. We've been advocating for it. I want to thank VDOT for having two years of consecutive studies to look at the possibility of putting a light at that intersection, which both studies have come back negative. They recently did a study about traffic signals and stop signs. That came back negative as well. So we're working collectively, as you see, we have all the different levels of government. I want to thank Supervisor Cattigan for helping secure some pilot program with flashing speedlights that are hopefully coming there to help reduce the traffic in that area as well. So last event, though, that I went, I do want to, I followed up the superintendent, although with less fanfare. I did get to go to the Potomac baseball game two nights ago. Great event. I did talk to Ms. Covington a long time as well, and Coach Covington, 2-1 win over Colonial Forge in extra innings. So it was a very exciting game, and a very good game to be out there and support a top contending team at the state level. With the budget, again, I know I'm running out of time, I do want to thank my supervisor in the Potomac District, Maureen Cattigan, for her support for educators. I want to thank the former board member, Betty Covington, who was at the first reading when Dr. Latifah was there and advocating for that. I do also, in closing, as Mr. Deutsch mentioned, I did, as soon as possible, try to get to Hilton High School yesterday as I got off work yesterday. I just went there immediately. My first instinct was to go, and I want to thank Mr. Deutsch has that relationship with me, where I didn't feel like I had to call him and ask his permission to go visit one of his schools. And I want to also commend the staff at Hilton High School for the response and the work that they did, and the long hours that were put in that day into the night, and then continuing with the procedures and the safety regulations. And I want to thank our entire staff for that. Sorry, a lot of stuff. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Trentum reminded me that I went over on my time last time. I will not do that this time. And that is my bad. Are there any Hilton students still here this evening? Please stand up. I want to thank you all for your patience and your courage and your time for coming tonight to share with us your stories, and the students that came earlier, and asking for us to make sure we're doing everything we can to be safe and secure. I'd like to echo the superintendent's comments this evening by reassuring everyone in the community that we are dedicated, concerned, and committed to making sure that we have the safest and most secure schools. So I want to thank you for coming out and speaking up and being here on behalf of the students at Hilton. Thank you both. Give them a round of applause, please. Next, I'd like to thank the Board of County Supervisors last night, which, you know, wasn't in the news. They passed the school board's budget 8-0. We passed it 8-0 here, they passed it 8-0 here. That is 16 to 0. So if anyone's keeping track, we have a lot of work to do to get another 16-0 budget next year, Mr. Wallingford, okay? I expect that budget draft on my desk tomorrow morning. Right, Dr. Waltz?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. You hear that? Outstanding. But thank you to the County Board of Supervisors, Chairman Stewart, for their commitment to fully fund our budget this year. I think it's fantastic. I'm committed to working with every single County Board of Supervisor member, every single school board member, to ensure that we continue to try to do what the community demands and deliver on what we can, as much as we can and where possible, and to continue to encourage the County Board of Supervisors to look for revenue sources to help fund our schools so that we can achieve levels to fulfill our critical needs and our critical unmet needs. Again, thank you to the Board of County Supervisors for that. Last, well, next, retirement. Thank you for all the great teachers. Great retirement ceremony this week. It was fantastic. Congratulations to that Potomac culinary team, Ms. Williams, and especially, I'd like to convey on behalf of Ms. Williams, a thank you to Chef Emily Stevenson from Patriot High School. With all the things we're trying to remember to do up here, we don't want to miss you. Thank you very much. Thank you to the terrific nurses. I mentioned that earlier. I think they do a terrific job here. I'm excited that they have chosen to come and work for our school system. They do take a pay cut in many ways from the jobs they can have outside in the private sector, but their dedication and commitment and time to our students is extremely valuable, and we are extremely grateful for that. It's been a tough week for the school system. I can't thank the staff, first and foremost, for passing this budget, and second, for everything they did yesterday to handle the crisis at Hilton High School. Thank you all again, and meeting adjourned.